Okay, I'll call the oral Spark City Council meeting of March the 9th, 2015 with the roll call, please.
Mayor Martini, absent. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt, absent.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
Reba Quorme, thank you.
Okay, and Councilwoman Ratty is on the phone from New York, and the mayor is not feeling well, but he should be back to work tomorrow, so. Our invocation speaker today is Michael Davis from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Michael, you ready? Everybody just stand.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for this beautiful day, for the beautiful spring that we are having, and for the many blessings that Thou has bestowed upon this great city, the city of Sparks. We pray, Father, that Thou would bless us in this time of drought with rain, and that Thou might bless the members of this city with love and kindness towards one another and respect. And we pray that Thou would bless the members of this council, that they might always do what's in the best interest of the members of this city, and we pray for these things and do so humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Wyre.
If you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Adam, would you lead us, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Number five, approve of the agenda. Anybody wishing to take any out of order, deleting items? Okay, looking for motion?
Move to approve the agenda as stated.
Charlene.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. Number six, approval of the minutes. Consideration possible, approval of the minutes of the regular Spark City Council meeting on February 25th, 23rd, 2015. Ed?
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, and Charlene, I was looking for you, Ms. Bybee and Mr. Lawson, how's that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I've answered to a lot worse.
Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Announcements, presentations, we have a proclamation. Is anybody here for the brain injury awareness one? Come on down, please. How are you today?
Doing great, thank you.
Good, good having a seat, and we'll have you say some words when we're done with the proclamation.
Well, I was hoping that Dr. Danny Granata was here today, so he usually catches access and is here early. I'm surprised he's not here.
You know, I could wait a little while if you'd like. We can bring it back up.
Do you mind?
No, not at all.
I was just checking my emails, and normally he would send me an email, and I don't, I would like to be able to go out and call the bus and see if maybe he's just...
Yep, absolutely.
Do you mind?
No, we'll hold that for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item number eight, consent items. Anybody want to pull one? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the consent items as presented. Are we going to both of them?
Yes, same thing.
Eight point one and eight point two.
Okay, second.
Second.
Mr. Lawson, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, or I'm sorry, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, move on to general business, nine point one. Consideration possible award of a contract, AC 5126, to provide engineering services for the Spark sewer model update. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Smith, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city of Sparks. This item, nine point one, in front of you today, is a consideration of professional services contract with Atkins. It's for engineering services related to updating our Spark sanitary sewer model. We last looked at our system from a modeling standpoint in 2004. At that time, we looked at the larger interceptor pipelines. It's also based on the Regional Transportation Commission's traffic analysis zones, which were hard to work with, so we need a new effort at this point. With that new effort, you know, we're seeing growth pick up, we're seeing new trends, some apartments, things like that, redevelopment. We're also seeing sewer flows, some reduction from conservation. So, this new effort with Atkins, we're considering, we want to look at some of our smaller mains, especially in the urban core, where development could occur, the redevelopment of apartments. We're also going to do it more land use based, so if we see somebody come in, want to do some apartments, things like that, we could quickly change that in the model to see what that impact would be. We selected Atkins through an RFP process, negotiated the scope as presented here. It's within budget. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Bybee.
Yeah, I was wondering, it's talking about the sewer model, is this contract with them, exactly what will it, what do you anticipate it, replacing some of the lines, putting lines where future growth is going? What exactly will this specific contract and work by Atkins include?
It'll basically analyze where we may need bigger lines. That last effort we did in 2004, we had several projects come out of that one. We had Spanish Springs sanitary sewer interceptor that went within Sparks Boulevard, down in Spanish Springs, and then also a large interceptor that we put in on Vista and Prater to generally serve the DeAndrea area of Sparks. It's not that actual physical, go build the pipeline with this, it's basically telling us where we may need those lines.
Okay, so the $407,000 is just for an analysis and them to determine what our needs are going to be? It's not to build anything, to improve anything, it's strictly the analysis piece?
Exactly, it's the analysis. There's, within that, a lot of data acquisition going out in the field, confirming where pipelines do truly connect, you know, reviewing our database of what pipelines we have, and a lot of monitoring out in the field, go put a meter within the lines themselves to see how much flow we have from certain subdivisions, things like that, to get a much better idea of the actual sewer flows that exist there, to make sure that this model isn't based on just what the books say it should be, but what we truly see in those pipelines themselves, so it's accurate.
What is the timeline on this? Like, how long will this take for them to complete?
We anticipate it'll take up to a year from when we say go to when we'll get the final report.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Lawson.
Andy, are they going to check the condition of the pipes, or is this strictly a flow and mapping?
Just strictly a flow and monitoring effort.
Andy, I have a question. If they use the camera and they notice that the flows are adequate in a certain area, but we know there's going to be more construction, do we go ahead and upgrade or upsize that line?
Yeah, if we see that, you know, there's projected growth in an area and there's capacity now, but we will need it at a certain point, that can be programmed into our capital improvement plan for, you know, based on those triggers when that development may occur, or certain timeframes when those pipes will need to be upsized.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Bybee.
Did we have bids from other companies, or is Atkins someone that we've worked with before? Is it a lowest bid? Give me an idea. It just seems like a lot of money, and I know it probably isn't in the realm of what you do, but were there other bids, and is this the best possible price?
It was a request for proposal process. It's a professional services engineering agreement, so we're not allowed to do it based on a bid. Everybody submit their bids type process. As an engineering contract, it's negotiated in price. But through the request for proposal process, we essentially issue a request, very similar to how our bids work, where it goes out in the paper to the public, anybody that's interested can submit a proposal for how they would do this work. We then, we received seven proposals. Out of that, we went through ranked the proposals, we had a group of city employees, engineers that went through and, based on the criteria established, ranked those in a blind ranking. Our purchasing manager then basically puts them together, and these are your firms, A, B, C, no names attached. Based on those rankings, the top three were definite, had a definite break, that there were three firms that were the highest ranking. So we then interviewed those three firms, and based on those interviews and their qualifications, we selected Atkins out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, looking for a motion, then. Okay, Mr. Lawson.
Let's, uh, computer slowing down. I move to award the contract, AC 5126, to provide engineering services for the Spark sewer model update with Atkins in the amount of $407,604.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
That's what it says on the sheet, so. Okay, nine point two. Mr. Driscoll, presentation, discussion, possible approval of the Washoe County Regional Communication System interlocal agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record. What you have in front of you is an amended interlocal agreement for the use of the 800 megahertz system, which we use for our public safety, primarily for public safety, and we do also do public, or the community services with that. It's been a long time since this agreement's been updated. There is a working group that looks at it from time to time. What's in front of you is the modifications that were deemed necessary to make this the best working document, and have the agreement be as efficient and as effective as possible for the continued use of the 800 megahertz system. And with that, I'll answer any questions. I do have Sean Taylor, who is the manager of the 800 system for Washoe County, in the audience, if we have any technical questions, or anything specific about the agreement with that, I'll answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the Washoe County Regional Communication System interlocal agreement, AC 5127, as amended, October 2014, as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Can you hear us okay, Julia?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Okay, nine point three. Neil. Consideration and possible approval to grant emergency spending authority to the city manager of up to $250,000 related to potential hydrocarbon contamination on city property. Neil.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem Smith, and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Cruz, deputy city manager. I am here today with an emergency spending item. As you know, we've been working on a potential redevelopment project on Victorian Square, and the development partner that we've been working with, as part of his due diligence in looking at the property, conducted a series of environmental studies, and were, you know, which is smart for somebody to do before they're going to take property on. One of the things they found on the parcel here at, just to orient everybody to the map, here's Victorian Avenue, here's the Nugget, there's the movie theater. These parcels that are outlined in, as they show up on that screen, it's not the red that I see here, but it's more of a, kind of a burgundy color, are the ones that are in consideration for the redevelopment deal that we're working with Silverwing on, you're all aware of that. The parcel here at the very southwest corner of the project is the one where hydrocarbons have been found. It's on property that is owned by the city's redevelopment agency, so now that we have been made aware of hydrocarbon contamination, we have a duty to investigate and then to remediate, if the law requires. So step one is to get an environmental firm on board, get them out there with their drill rig, and start poking holes in the ground, looking for where this, where these hydrocarbons are, how deep they go, what kind of concentration they have. And then we will work with the state to report what we find, and out of that will come some sort of mitigation plan, where we'll, in all likelihood, have to clean it up, dig up the soil, maybe haul it out to the burn plant out in the East Truckee River Canyon, something of that nature. But things need to happen in a pretty quick, a pretty quick timeframe. So what we're here asking for today is for you to grant the city manager up to $250,000 worth of spending authority to conduct the investigations and work with the state and develop that plan. You know, perhaps we can deal with all of it inside a quarter of a million dollars, perhaps it's going to cost more. At this point, we don't know. We're at the stage where we just know that hydrocarbons have been found, and we need to, we need to start. So to summarize, we're here asking for the spending authority to get that started. We've lined up an environmental consultant, and should be able to have a drill rig on site a week from today, starting with that. So we're, we've prepared to move, we just need your authority to spend some money to do it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Neil, we're basically obligated to do this, now that it's been brought to our attention. We have really no choice in the matter, we have to clean this up.
Yes, sir. That's the case.
And I just love these kind of things when they come to council. You have to do this. So here's another one. We had to buy some radios, and now we got to clean up. But I get it, I understand, we got to do it. Regardless if we sell the property or not, we still have to clean it up, even though, just now because we know that it exists.
We own the property, and we have knowledge of contamination.
And once we become aware, we come up...
Yes, then we become responsible.
So, yeah, it's just one of those deals, part of doing business, unfortunately.
The, we are, we are asking for general fund authority to do this today as a starting point. We don't know that that's ultimately where it makes the most sense to pay for the cleanups. The property is owned by the redevelopment, the redevelopment agency, but that board of directors isn't having a meeting for another two weeks, and we need to move. So that's why we're in front of you here today, to kind of allow us to start, and we will certainly come back to you with additional information and for additional conversations about how to pay for it as we develop information.
Ms. Bybee.
That was, part of my question was, would the redevelopment district funds be used for this? We can decide that in two weeks with redevelopment, and maybe we'll have a better, we might have a little better idea of where, well, we won't know, full cost, probably.
I doubt we'll know full cost, but I hope that within a couple of weeks, we'll have a decent idea of at least, you know, where the contamination is, and maybe how deep it is, so that we can get our hands around, you know, the size of the problem, and are we talking about a $10,000 problem, or a $100,000 problem, or a half a million dollar problem? Questions we can't answer right now? I hope that, you know, we can at least be talking about the size of the ballpark, if you will, within a couple of weeks.
And another question I had on the contamination, the firm, the environmental firm going in to start pulling out dirt to see how far, how deep, they also obviously check the possible contamination that could be airborne or in, you know, does it have, obviously, you know, very serious implications of hydrocarbons? And we'd have to see if they felt any of that was coming from that site that could have affected anything around that. I mean, we don't know, but that's what they're looking at, too. Not only where it is and how many, how much of the property...
Where it might have gone, yes, ma'am.
But groundwater to...
Yes.
Airborne to the health of patients.
Yeah, and in all likelihood airborne is not a concern. This was an old mobile station, you know, for a period of 40 years or greater, so that, you know, the odds are it was a leaking underground storage tank. You know, the concerns of atmospheric pollution aren't normally real large in those situations. It's the hydrocarbons, they stay in the soil, and then they move. If they've hit the groundwater, they move with the groundwater. So that's where we're going to, we're going to focus, is underground, you know, identifying how deep they've gone, identifying where the water table is, and then, you know, having a whole bunch of laboratory testing done, that will look not just for specific gasoline, but for the whole range of hydrocarbons and all of their components. And most of that's outlined in state law, are the things that you have to look for. So it's, you know, once they start encountering it, the steps are pretty well regulated by the state, and they're acting under, you know, the guides of the federal EPA. So, you know, it's a, it's a standard process that you go through with contamination like we're encountering.
Right. When Silverwing was in there and they started taking their spill samples, did they only find it on that corner property? And where the environmental company were hiring will start there, and then move out and around to decide if it's...
Yes, to answer your first question, yes, that's where, that's where Silverwing's consultants found it. And then, as we get out there with our consultant to test it, yes, we will, we will go and confirm where they found it, and then start looking away from there in all directions, so that we can find out just how, how large the spill is, or not. We don't know yet.
Well, and like Ed said, it's something we, something we have to do. I mean, we hate having to come up with this kind of money that wasn't expected, but not only for the development that we want moving forward, but for the health, you know, health and safety reasons, and our responsibility. I mean, it's something that has to be done, so.
Yes.
Tough to have to spend that money, but, you know, obviously we have to.
Ms. Ratty, do you have something to say?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
We'll make a motion.
Any comments? Okay, looking for a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Lawson.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
I move to grant the city manager spending authority of up to $250,000 related to, $250,000, that is, related to potential hydrocarbon contamination of city property, and I lost my tongue, of city property.
Okay. Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
I think Mr. Granata's going to miss his award.
I think so.
His proclamation.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
There you go.
Our board wasn't working, now it's working. Okay, it passes unanimously.
I know, it's already loaded.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any public hearing. I'll tell you what, I'll go, is, is Mr. Granata...
I do qualify.
We got just a few more minutes, and we'll come back to you. That's okay. We don't have any public hearing items, planning and zoning, public hearings, and we do not have a closed-door session today.
We do not.
Okay, let me...
Do we got any good jokes from staff or something?
I don't know, do we? Adam?
Are you Wendy? I have an announcement.
Well, we'll get to the comments and everything else. Let's, let's go to Wendy. Come on down, and we'll do this proclamation, and hopefully he'll show up.
And I have something to say, because I was just about to talk.
Sure, just come on down, and she'll read the proclamation, and maybe we'll get a picture taken, and then you can, you can talk to your heart's content.
So do you want me to read it first?
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a proclamation from the city of Sparks. Whereas every year, over 1.7 million Americans sustain a traumatic brain injury about every 17 seconds. Among those who survive, 275,000 people per year must learn to cope with lifelong loss of function. And whereas 5.3 million Americans, 2% of the US population, currently live with disabilities resulting from a brain injury. And whereas motor vehicle accidents cause 17% of brain injuries, falls 35%, assaults and firearms 26%, sports and recreation and other 22%. And whereas an estimated 200,000 children are hospitalized each year with brain trauma, and 30,000 sustain permanent disabilities, this is increasing with awareness. And whereas every year in the United States, 50,000 children sustain bicycle-related brain injuries, of those over 400 die. And whereas males are twice as likely to sustain a brain injury than females, and young men between the ages of 15 and 24 have the highest rate of injury. And whereas on Saturday, March 28th, Nevada's annual Push, Pull, or Drag 5K goal is to bring more awareness and prevention to northern Nevada, now therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, does hereby complain, proclaim, March 2015, as Brain Injury Awareness Month. In and for the city of Sparks, and encourage all citizens to give recognition and appreciation to the Brain Recovery Assistance Institute of Nevada, and Because I Can Foundation for their mission to help brain injury survivors to put their lives back together by regaining independence through support, empowerment, resources, public awareness, education, and youth prevention programs. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Sparks, Nevada, to be affixed this 18th day of February 2015, and it's signed by Gino R. Martini and Teresa Gardner, city clerk. Thank you. I keep hearing little noises, and I'm like, I'm going to force up the...
We all know Dennis.
I know you do. We're so lucky.
Just thinking, I know Dennis since 1990.
Crazy.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming in today, Wendy. Go ahead and say a few things.
Hi, it's Teresa.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm usually Josh's mom, so I don't have my own identity.
I thought you said Wendy, so.
I'm really glad that you guys took the time to do this proclamation. This year it's a little bit, every year it's more special to me. My journey started with traumatic brain injury in 2008, having a son that was a professional athlete, a factory rider for Kawasaki, youngest to go pro in off-road racing. And I'm really honored today because a gentleman that I think a lot of, and his wife, because she was a teacher of mine in Fernley, is Mr. Garrison, and my son rode with him, and so he knows my journey, he knows the, from the beginning, how my son was on top of the world, and within a split second, we were fighting for his life. He suffered a traumatic brain injury in a race in Windover, Nevada, and was in a coma for 24 days. Very little brain activity, lowest that you could have on a Glasgow scale. So to fast forward, they didn't think he was going to wake up, and if he woke up, the severity of his disabilities were going to be astronomical. And I go, I know you guys know that, because you are friends with Denny, you see what brain injury can do to people. So he did wake up after 24 days, and he started showing amazing recovery. And what we started to look for is basically the statistics and why. So we found out the possibilities, and in the possibilities, it was to never give up and really never settle, and you guys see that in Denny's personality. Even though his disabilities have really taken him to a different path, and fortunately, I'm so blessed that my son is not there, 2011, he was able to ride his bicycle across the country, 2,700 miles...
Yeah.
...to raise awareness about brain injuries. So Nevada is still like awareness, prevention. We have all these off-road sports, we, we're on the mountains, we're snowboarding, we're doing all of these extreme things. Good, I can still showcase my friend.
Okay.
So...
Come on down, Dennis.
We were still lacking what... At least you're late, and I'm not late. I'm always late, huh?
She knows that.
Yeah.
I've known Dennis Diddy for 30, 25 years, and he always liked to make an entrance up there.
So we found that we're in need of a lot of support in our areas. The doctors are doing amazing jobs saving people's lives. Rehab's are doing a great job getting people started. What happens is our insurance shuts them down. Brain injury is not a 30-day recovery, it's not like a broken arm, a six months. It is something that you put in your life every day. Every day you have room for advancement, improvement. What happens, though, is that without having that coaching format, or without having that support system, sometimes you get lost, sometimes you get settled, kind of like a bad marriage, you get in a rut. So, and we were here last year, Denny and I were, and I have developed this amazing friendship with him, he's touched me in so many ways, but I always thought, you know, Denny's declining in his health. Is that fair? He's young, is that really fair? Is there more? Is there more? So shortly after we got done with this meeting last year, I received a call from a company out of New York City that said, "We've been following you and what you've been doing in the state of Nevada, and we would like to give you an award." And it's for your advocacy in Nevada, and with youth and believing. So I went back to New York City, and Sanjay Gibde was CNN, was the presenter, and I got up there and accepted my award, and I'm like, you know what? If I don't take this back and do something in the state of Nevada to make a difference with people that are suffering with brain injuries, and can... with people that are suffering with brain injuries, and cannot get the resources, and cannot get the help that they need, yeah, maybe I'm looking to do it a little bit out of the box, because I'm this over-the-top personality, and got this, they call me the coach, the brain coach. If I don't do something in Nevada, then I'm part of the problem. So that's where I'd like to showcase my friend, Dr. Denny. He is involved in a program that I have gone at Double Diamond Athletic Club in Reno, same program I put my son through. And can I steal this from you? And last year, Denny could not lift his right arm up and drop it down and pick it back up, because he was paralyzed, right? Can you show them what you can do now? Can you lift it up a little bit?
Look at you, you're amazing, Denny.
If this doesn't get your heart pumping, I don't know what will. So I have a company, and I'm honored that it's in Sparks, Nevada, at the More to Life Adult Day Center, and I reach out to people that they've given up on them, or people have given up on them, and I help them believe in themselves. It's not about what he can't do, it's what he can do and how we build and empower him. And so I'm honored that I am able to do that in the city of Sparks, and I also have a support group, once a month on the third Wednesday of every month, to help people that have suffered traumatic brain injuries with education, and also caregivers, to kind of let them know that they do have support, to help them continue improvement. So thank you very much. Do you have anything to say?
No, I am late. I'm late.
Oh, you know you're late. You're never late, Denny, you can come anytime you want.
If you're any later, though, you'd be there by yourself.
Yeah. You know, Teresa, I wish you wouldn't cry, because you make me wanna cry. And I know that all, brain injuries, all disabilities, all disabilities are underfunded.
Yes.
And the idea of not giving up, it's great work you're doing, and we appreciate it, we really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did they want a picture with Denny?
Sure, Denny, so we can get a picture with, with Denny? Denny in the picture?
With the proclamation.
Yeah, go ahead, go do it.
Do you want me to go back down?
Yeah, we can all go down there.
Hold it with your right hand?
Yeah.
We'll all go down and get our picture with Teresa and Denny.
Can you just stand there?
Yeah.
Ready?
The way he gets around, and he's, he's involved in the community, and, you know, God bless you, Denny.
I was gonna say, this weekend, I was talking to a friend of mine about raising money for Care Chest, and Denny was at. The Care Chest fundraiser, and we got, I got kidnapped, had to raise some bail money. I was telling my friend about Denny, who's known Denny as long as I have, and he said he made my day.
Excellent.
Said, 'cause, when I ran into him, he said, "I hope you're having a great day," and not thinking about himself. So you're right, he's a great inspiration.
He touches you.
Thank you, Teresa. Okay, could have more of these, I think.
I don't think I can.
Okay, you said we do not have a closed-door session?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, I'll open up the comment, for public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from city council and city manager? Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to introduce, I have a new appointment to the Sparks Citizen Advisory Committee. I have three positions, and I have extended the two gentlemen who are, who Councilman Carrigan already had on board, and I have added a brand-new person to that committee, and she's here today. I'd like to introduce Wendy Haynes-Rossen, who is going to be at the meeting this Thursday, and I'm so glad you've, you know, decided to become involved in this and be our voice to the council from the citizens of Ward 4, and welcome. Thank you so much for coming today, too.
Now, her name is Wendy?
Yes.
Okay.
You heard Wendy, you did hear Wendy.
I did, I did. You wanna come down and say a few words, Wendy? Come on down. And congratulations.
Thank you, I'm very excited to get to participate. I was telling Charlene yesterday that I love Sparks, and I have a passion for Sparks, and I, and I just wanna be able to be involved in whatever changes and exciting things that are coming up in this direction, and it's just kinda really exciting to get to be here and see how this whole process works.
But those are exactly the type of people we want in our commissions, and you'll be joining people with the same passion and excitement for the city of Sparks.
And that's exciting.
I know for me, I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? You know, I do have one, I'll ask the, the planning department to bring on the next city council meeting, changing the side, sign order, and so we were discussing with some options, and see if we can do it. Where's Neil? Is that good enough for you, Neil? Okay. Mr. Manager? Any comments?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.